Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Pittsburgh Central School District Board of Education meeting. And we will begin by calling the meeting to order. And please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we will begin with a moment of silence in memory of a dear teacher, Kristin Rose, who served at Hawkins Road Middle School as a sixth grade teacher. Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Second.
Renee and Sarah? Thank you. All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries. Next, we will have a principal's report from Stephanie Barck from Jefferson Road Elementary School.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. So excited to be back here for sort of a mid-year update in my second year with the school community at Jefferson Road, and very privileged to speak on behalf of students, staff, and families at Jeff Road. And thank you to the Board of Education for your support and certainly for coming to visit with us last week. It was great to spend some time on the campus and really talk through how we're bringing some of the physical upgrades to life, but to have you in our spaces, and I know heard rave reviews from the staff around the opportunity to connect with you at the breakfast. So thanks for coming. And certainly, a thank you to Superintendent Perro and the central office team for unwavering support for Jefferson Road. And a deep thank you to the staff at Jefferson Road who really bring the magic to life every day, and the families who entrust the kids to our care. Lots going on to celebrate, so excited to share some of those highlights. We went this year with a theme that evolved over my first year last year through my entry planning with the staff and really trying to listen to the voice of the staff community, the families, and the kids themselves around wishes for common language, vision, systems, and shared purpose. And then we came into the Board of Ed Summer Leadership Retreat and the work on the culture code, and it just all connected beautifully, literally. So we went with a theme of being connected this year, and we hear that if you were to spend a day in the live at Jefferson Road, we hear it in the morning announcements, that the words "we are all connected" comes through the cafeteria, it comes through our student council meetings, and just really trying to talk about how we bring the district mission to life every day and anchoring into that word. And certainly, we did quite a bit of work this summer with, as an ILT that I'll talk about and share a little bit with you about that. But goal tonight is to highlight some ways that we're really trying every day to anchor in and be student-centered, staff-supported, and bring all of our decisions around what's best for kids. So a couple great visual highlights for you tonight brings smiles to me every single time I look. So this was on the left there, our first fun run, and that's our fourth graders just living the dream out on the field mid-school day and some great partnership with families. And the tender picture on the right, we'll talk a little bit about safety, vulnerability, and purpose tonight. And one of the ways we've done that is with some of our systems for buddies and pairings in the building so that all kids are connected. And if you could hear their little voices, one very thoughtfully helping down the hallway in the buddy system from recess, "need a Band-Aid," and the other one, "oh, thank you for helping." And then all of a sudden, they were like, "I'm good. I've got it now on my own." And when I was talking with the instructional leadership team about things to highlight, what we're looking for is student agency and voice as well. So just a little visual there, but also adorable. So we're definitely still anchored in through all of our conversations, our leadership teamwork, and committee work to the strategic initiative in partnership with building a strong school culture. So definitely continuing to focus in on really strong instructional moves. So proud of and just honored to be in those conversations with staff, whether it's through conversations in the hall or opportunities and invitations to come in or the formal observation process, staff meetings, really digging into instructional high-leverage moves that will highlight a few tonight and certainly still building the welcoming and affirming environment in those structures that allow for kids to see in themselves, within themselves, outside of themselves, and start to think about their own journeys. So the focus highlighted at our summer ILT meeting, our instructional leadership team paired into the work from the Board of Ed Summer Workshop around those belonging cues that will help us lift rigor and authentic learning experiences that are personalized for all kids. So we've tried to anchor in each of our meetings and our structures into the safety, vulnerability, and purpose that certainly comes from the work of Daniel Coyle. And everything from our SEL Committee to our faculty meetings and our opportunities for professional learning, but also talking to kids about what each of those things mean in our structures and purpose every day. So I'll highlight some physical safety upgrades that you were able to see last week and celebrate, and just thank you again for that support for our capital project and the improvements to physical safety, because what that leads to is psychological safety, and then those conversations where we can really anchor in to our practices every day. So we've got the couple pictures there on the left and in the middle, certainly of our secure vestibules, and just sharing again from the voice of the family community, an overwhelming sense of security with those features, celebrating and shouting out the staff who have had to adjust their practices, including teaching staff. We've looked at everything from traffic flow throughout the day to really maximize the security features, to how we use visitor aware, and the grace and patience that everyone's given around learning those new systems. Beautiful updates in the building. I was just talking with Mr. Brady about all of the different pieces from our pilot PA system, which is tremendous. So a thank you to Mike Vesby and Jeff Kimmer and Matt Kwakawski and Mike Piper and Aaron and all who have been involved in helping bring that to life, because that's another piece of that safety layer, but also just strong instruction and environment. So we've been able to tie in together our PA system with our classroom audio systems, and it's just really great, too, for the instructional environment, because we can toggle where we're speaking to in the building and think about emergency planning as well. And we've got some great updates in the gym space with new wall pads, climbing features, so lots around our physical security and safety. Couple slides on vulnerability, because this is where we've spent after the first year with the school community and then the work of the summer workshop and ILT's own identified goals last year into this year are is that sense of connection and common vision and some shared language and systems. So a few slides on how we've been vulnerable with each other, with our students, with our families, and how we're really working for that theme of we're all connected and we have a shared goal here, which is every child, every day. We've implemented through a selection from ILT, from this instructional hub, shared learning agreements, which are not overall new, but it's been great to look system-wide at creating with students involved classroom norms. They come under different names depending on the ages. You can see a couple different contracts there and learning, you know, whether they're classroom promises or agreements, but they look different by level because they're the voice of the students. And then how do we re-norm and keep that connection to student voice on what makes them feel the best to be able to do their best and be their best? Continuing the work of having kids identify and talk with us about who they're connected with at school and extending that a little bit this year through our school mental health teams, not only who's your trusted or connected adult at school you can go to with a problem, but also who are you connected to in your peer groups, so that we can help kids and make sure that we're fostering some great connections within our school. And then just an example of that come to life, because I was just so proud of the spontaneous joy and connection that when you take time and you have those intentional structures, that's when the magic happens. So we had a student winner here who you met in November, Josephine Ness underneath there. She won the Pittsburgh Pride Award. I traveled up to have my impromptu drop and announcement, said I'm going to steal her for no less than four minutes to go take a picture. We came back, and while we were gone, that happened. They crowded around, they made her a poster and held it up and were so excited when they got back. And I think that was the most special piece of her award that day, outside of a great ceremony with you. But fostering those connections intentionally and having that common language across the building has been really beneficial. Continuing on that theme of connection, and I'm going to jump around a little bit here, but a lot of this is from the voice of the students and the teachers. So looking at intentional pairings and fostering connections, reading buddies or classroom buddies, or however that's been referred to in different ways over the years in a number of our buildings, we tried really hard this year and did some scheduling adjustment to get those connections dedicated for students across grade levels to help empower kids to have opportunities for social connection, academic leadership opportunities, and really connect with each other. So in the middle there, I mean, that's magic in the making there, as these two are connecting over their winter project before break, but their expressions really are very sweet. And just to be able to get those connections and see the kids with each other is great, and they really miss each other in between, which is also awesome. I hear them asking teachers, "when do we get back together?" We're also trying to bring students visibly into their spaces, too. So we've got the Be the Eye and Kind. It was World Kindness Day, of course, in November. We had every student take a photograph in front of the bulletin board, human-sized bulletin board there, and their images will flash on the screens the second semester in the cafeteria, another nice new physical upgrade where we're really trying to maximize our technology. And below the Eye and Kind and the sweet face there is our student leaders in fourth and fifth grade, student council, who said last year to me when I met with them a couple times, "biggest goal, let's work on our cafeteria," because sometimes it's hard to be in the cafeteria, and sometimes it's a lot of fun, and we want everyone to feel that way. So this year, they're doing a writing prompt at their own suggestion, the whole building, which I just loved. And some kids are writing, some are drawing, some are talking, but their work will go up underneath the screens to really help bring student voice, and the prompt is, "I'm doing my best when," and recognizing that that's different for everybody, and they're empowered to share their voice there. And then certainly, we've had a lot going on with our PTSA, so a deep thank you to our PTSA and all parents, families, and caregivers for the partnership. We've had some great initiatives that have brought the school together in that sense of connection, including certainly our fun run, which not only was a great opportunity to get some exercise during the day and cheer each other on, we had great family support, raised a lot of funds for our building that will support all students K-5. And in the lower left, because I love a good metaphor there, they're planting bulbs. It's a beautiful new perennial flower bed that the PTSA, every child dropped a bulb in. So of course, as we're out there, I was reminding them that not only do you bloom every day, you're going to bloom every year. So the fifth graders who are on their way, they'll come up every year. But definitely anchoring into some ways that we're all have a hand in our school community. And similarly with staff, working really hard at their asking and their voice to foster those relationships so that we can engage in meaningful conversation and goal-setting around authentic instruction as we future-forward travel together. So you'll see some of those SEL practices there. On the left, the signature practices and all the spaces that then are turnkeying into classroom lessons around a warm opening, engaging structures so that all can engage in the learning, whether it's a staff meeting or in classrooms. They're playing paper plate pictionary, and it took maybe four minutes, and they just the laughter in the room really set the energy high. So they've been asking for more of those, which is a lot of fun and also purposeful. In the middle, we're really helping in the school just to connect with the kids and have the kids see us and every single staff member as important in the journey. So that's Once Upon a Time We Were Kids. So they took great joy in walking down, whether they were on a break walk or on their way to lunch. Emily Sweeney, our school librarian, put this together, and this is the staff as their young selves, and now the pets are up there, so it's really evolving. But the kids, "what's on the board next?" I don't know. Ask Mrs. Sweeney. She's magic. And then over on the right, a big focus this fall, as I lead into the next semester, is focusing on systems and pathways and really supporting all students. So building off the fall superintendent's conference day, where we had some great learning around supporting all students, we've also expanded into conversations at the building level around what are our structures for accessing support, engaging in those conversations, bringing services to students, problem-solving when it gets bumpy. So an example there, Dr. Carrie Casey and Leilin Thompson came in and presented a nice small portion of a larger training for us to kickstart our conversations around supporting big needs in the classroom when they arise and helping to empower staff with resources and tools. So lots of different ways. We're working on being vulnerable and sharing that, and we're moving in this spring from now forward, so just to highlight our goals for the next few months, to really anchoring into our shared purpose and understanding our why every day and having that common language together. So we're anchoring all of our instructional decision-making into that vision. And we're just, you know, certainly Jefferson Road, one of the students asked me the other day, "what, why did you become a principal?" And I said, "to help and to lead and to be with." And he goes, "but we were pretty great before." "You are, and you're going to be great in the future." And he was just the sweetest. And I was thinking, "this is part of our vision and why we keep visiting that and helping kids understand our why." So we did some work with the Jeff Road SEL Committee in the fall where we did a little benchmark walk. You can see staff there highlighting areas of strength and areas for focus, and we're doing that with the whole staff as well to partner into our work with the Next Gen Standards and the CRSE framework. But definitely, we started in this month kind of looking at our vision statement under the idea of what's our shared purpose for every child, every day. So we're working on that and hoping to have that ready as we wrap up the school year, but there's lots in progress with shared purpose. And certainly, a big piece of what we do is help kids grow in our instruction and their academic progress and think about personalized learning for students individually. So a few of these are continued from last year, but I'm going to highlight a couple exciting things happening in curriculum and instruction. So first of all, a thank you to Heather Clayton, who's leading some great work with Susan Harrison and Denise Sobel and the teachers, whether it's math through our Amplify Pilot or the program review and ELA. The second and fifth grade teachers are just bubbling with conversation that's trickling already into mathematical practices conversations as we're going through the pilot work with those teams. So a thank you again for that support and definitely seeing a lot of the math practices coming to life and being able, teachers are asking to watch each other, they're, you know, having those conversations around how can we increase engagement in math and help students see themselves as math learners. There's quite a bit going on there in addition to working really closely, in particular with fifth grade for our regrouping practices, which were recommended, and bringing those to life. And I think one other thing to highlight, because I know the team's pretty proud of it, is really anchoring in our systems around using data to drive our instruction and kind of getting back to those conversations, how we're meeting with the larger team, including teachers at our universal screening, but also implementing this year more quarterly and regular meetings with the small academic intervention team to make sure to, whether we're looking to extend for a student or to provide some thoughtful intervention to keep everybody moving forward, those structures in connection with student support. So pretty exciting, and I know you got to see some of those pieces last week, but overall, so proud at the mid-year mark of everything in progress. I sat again to get it ready, and I'm like, oh, last year I had till May to think about all the great things, but there's so much in progress in just the first semester, and we're not even to the end of it yet. So really proud of the different ways that we see Jeff Road come together to be their best and do their best. And I'm really just very proud of the community and grateful to be there. That's a little bit about what we've been up to. Yeah, thank you for having me. And thanks for your support.
I just wanted to say how impressed I was with the staff turnout at the meet and greet.
Oh, thank you.
Everybody was not only very welcoming to us, but really seemed to enjoy each other's company, and so many people came out. It was really great.
Thank you. That's great. Thanks. Yeah, I had to actually announce it, like 8:26, like, we've got to set the library up, and they just, someone was like, "how great that we don't want to go yet." But also off to help students. So that's been a goal. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Stephanie. We appreciate the opportunity to engage with you and the staff. Next, may I have a motion for approval of the December 10, 2024 minutes? All in favor? Okay. All opposed and one abstention. Thank you. Next, you'll see a list of Monroe County School Boards Association Committee meetings and dates. And at this time, we will hear from our legislative chair, Sarah Velucio.
Thank you, Robyn. I just wanted to say really quick that our legislative breakfast is coming up in a couple weeks on February 1st. So if you have not already registered for that, please do so. If you need the link resent, I can do that as well. We already have a great turnout of both members and legislators, so I'm really looking forward to a great event again this year. The other thing is our trip to Albany, that was opened up to our legislative committee only, and it filled with the spots that we had available. So I know Emily is going to be joining us for that trip, and we have a great representation across the entire county of those who are coming with us. So looking forward to that one as well, and we will certainly share out on that in March. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah, so next we will have Audit Oversight Committee.
Okay, so we met last December 19th for a brief meeting. We took a look at our federal funds audit, the internal audit, and the extra classroom audit. We reviewed all. The internal audit focus was on payroll processing, and there was one finding that was reported. It was recommended that the payroll be certified one to three days after the actual payroll is released. In the past, the payroll was certified pending a scheduled meeting to conduct a comprehensive review of the payroll, and now payroll will be reviewed and certified within one to two days, and if needed, a comprehensive review will take place at a later date. Given the scope of the comprehensive review, this was a very minor finding and is of low risk. Overall, we're very appreciative of all of the outstanding efforts by our payroll department, so please give them our thanks. Additionally, the auditor found minor findings during the extra classroom audit. The district treasurer's training program will incorporate the minor findings in the future training sessions for all who attend, and there were no findings in the federal funds single audit. There was a brief discussion within the group of the federal title grants and programs that support special education, and the district has always received federal support for those areas. And the committee discussed the potential impact if the U.S. Department of Education happens to be reduced. And that, my friends, was quick and concludes our report, and I know that if we have any additional questions, Mike's going to be the one to answer them.
Thank you so much, Chair Renee. We appreciate you. Next, you will see a list of dates to remember, upcoming dates. For example, January 20, 2025, our schools are closed for Martin Luther King Junior Day. January 29, 2025, our schools are closed for Lunar New Year. And on January 30th, we have another building tour and visit at Park Road Elementary School. And five show of hands, we have to see what board members can attend. Thank you. Thank you so much. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is February 4, but prior to that, we will have our, we will begin our budget discussion sessions. Next, we will have our financial reports from Mr. Vesby.
Super, thanks so much. First, for your consideration is the acceptance of the treasurer's report. Some highlights, 16 million invested in various CDs and another 30 million into our various asset funds. So again, interest earnings is really a primary focus. We've exceeded the forecast revenue budget by 145,000 year-to-date. So that's really an area of continued strength, so we're happy about not only the management of that, but the returns to help offset some of the revenue challenges that we see. Sales tax is a little down. I want to take a look at that, especially as we move into the upcoming budget season, year-over-year, about $86,000 difference. So I do need to take a look at that, especially as it pertains to the upcoming revenues. Tax collections are in line, 98%, which is where we were last year. Again, we're made whole by the tax collection typically in the April timeframe. And then we did receive foundation aid payment of 1.8 million. School lunch program continues to be strong. We had additional serving days. The cost of food sold decreased, and that primarily was because we used inventory because of some staff absences. So we continue, it's a theme with all of our support staff, to struggle with staffing, so they did use more of what they had. But I took a look at year-over-year, and as you see in there, year-to-date, you know, 41,000 compared to negative 46 year-to-date. So we continue to do pretty well in that food service program. Mike and I had a chance to talk about this on the way down to Albany, but one of the themes that we're seeing again is federal lunch reimbursement for everyone. So that's something that we're keeping a close eye on, because that would definitely change our operations, so that would, we'd have to evaluate that program in the future. Nothing else fiscally to note as part of the treasurer's report.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion for acceptance of the treasurer's report from November 30? Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? Thank you.
Okay, next, for your consideration is the single audit report, as discussed previously in the Audit Oversight Committee report.
May I have a motion to accept the single audit report? Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. Next, for your consideration is the acceptance of the internal audit report, payroll processing. Again, overall, a great job in that report. The payroll certification person is me, and so we now have it on my calendar to do within a couple of days after. So really, a minor finding when you consider the scope of everything else that can go wrong in payroll. So we did have a chuckle about that, but certainly there's room for improvement, and we'll move in that direction.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the internal audit report payroll processing? Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next, for your consideration is the extra classroom audit report and response. Again, minor findings, nothing of significance, and we have a good training program that we take those findings and move forward each year. It's always a qualified opinion based on the scope of money and students who are participating, you know, in that treasurer role.
May I have a motion to accept the extra classroom audit report and response? Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? That motion carries.
All right, next, for your consideration is a regional, it's a resolution to have a regional information center, a RIC, take, approve and review ed law 2D application contracts, so it's a shared service. I think, you know, when you look at some of the services that we're trying to consolidate statewide in terms of cyber insurance, this is right in line with that. And if there's any detailed questions, I'm sure Dr. Kimmer would be happy to answer them.
May I have a motion to accept the resolution for RIC to approve ed law 2D application contracts? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? That carries.
All right, next, for your consideration, the acceptance and approval of the non-resident tuition rates. This is something that we do every year. If we do have students that attend the district, these are the rates that we use for billing purposes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the non-resident tuition rates? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? That carries. Thank you.
Okay, next, for your consideration is the declaration of scrap equipment. These are weight room equipment that's no longer operational.
Motion to accept the declaration of scrap equipment for men in high school weight Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? Thank you. That carries.
Okay, and finally, for your consideration is, under the auction of buses, is we decided to swap one bus out that was in better shape than another bus, and this is really just in the nick of time, because we are receiving finally the new buses that are coming in. So the plan is to swap these buses out and then put the bus that's primarily used for training that we originally declared training that we originally declared on the next round that you'll see in the February-March timeframe.
May I have a motion to accept the auction of buses action?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? That carries. Thank you. Next, we will have a, thank you, Mr. Vesby. Next, we will have a human resources report from Mr. Clark.
Thank you, and good evening. First, for your consideration, we have the professional staff report. You'll see seven school-related professional appointments, two certificated staff resignations for retirement, one supervisory and technical resignation for retirement. We have a fall coaching appointment and salary for you, and then we have per diem substitute appointments as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the professional staff report?
Second.
Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor? That carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, for your consideration, we have the support staff report. We have four clerical appointments, two transportation appointments, two transportation resignations for retirement, two custodial maintenance appointments, one custodial maintenance resignation, and two food service appointments.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the support staff report?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed. That carries. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
And finally, we have a tenure recommendation, a first reading.
Thank you. And next, we'll have from our Chief Information Officer, Dr. Kimmerer, a report.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, community. Starting off with a slide today, not only talking a little bit about enrollment projections for the next 10 years, but also wanted to call out that this is assembled by a bunch of people behind the scenes, of which Donna Hanson's here today from our data team. So this is months' worth of work done by several people. I just have the privilege and proud to stand in front of you to give you months' worth of data and work, and you have the expanded packet. If you ever have questions about the packet, please stop by. Board members from the past have absolutely sat down, because there's a lot here, and for my 15-minute presentation, it doesn't even do it justice. So if you ever have questions, please let me know. The data summary overall, starting off with the end in mind, is that our long-term enrollment projections will be flat with a slight increase over time, and that's from 2024 to 2034. We always monitor the projections by the individual schools, because there's always ebb and flow. Anything that I've learned in the last 10 years as your CIO, that nothing is constant. There's always an ebb and flow to schools, and there's an ebb and flow, bubbles, I call it, with the different cohort of classes. Believe it or not, our enrollment projections with the various formulas and processes that I've inherited from folks before me, and we've made them better, 91% accurate over the last 10 years, and even better, 91% over 10 years and 98 over the last five years. So you can hang your hat on some of these projections, and we'll get into those details. The purpose, Mike and Terry love the fact that we give them some numbers to help build the budget. We send that, those numbers to Albany, which then ultimately dictates state aid and state aid predictions. Staffing and sectioning, which we just started working on now with the data team and with Sean's office and with the schools. The biggest thing I really enjoy hearing that we are constantly keeping an eye on are catchment areas. That's the wild card relative to our growth. We'll definitely give you the details here today, and there's more in your packet as well. Transportation planning, we work with Carla and Mike and his team to make sure that we understand where our kids are moving into, where the families are moving into, and how we might have to adjust transportation routes. And then overall, resource planning, for example, Matt and my department being able to plan for one-to-one laptops, as an example. I wish it was as easy as K go one, or our kids go five, go six, or our kids graduate and go eight through nine, and we just know. It's not that easy. There's other ingredients that go into the soup, and we definitely track trends over time. The most recent trend we're really keeping an eye on, and this one keeps Sean up at night, is our kindergarten classes, because they continue to grow with full-day kindergarten. So we'll show you some data there, but that's a relatively new trend that we're tracking. We apply turnover rates. Our neighborhoods age out. Right now, our Park Road neighborhood is getting a little bit older, and the school there is shrinking a little bit. So we definitely watch the turnover rates, and they're pretty reliable. Census data, we haven't had a federal census in a while, so really not much to report on there, but in past presentations, I have been able to let you know what we've learned from the federal government. Not much in that area lately. Private school enrollments, we like to keep an eye on that. We'll talk about that today. We already talked about kindergarten, and the birth rates in the county go up and down depending on the year and the world events, and then the new housing piece. From the town of Pittsford, now that first slide I showed you, I'm going to go back to it real quick. That is the Basin, Burgundy Basin Inn, if you can't recognize it. I was shocked when I saw the picture. I'm showing this, and I'm going back three or four slides, because this is part of the town of Perrington. I don't have much of a relationship with them, so we're learning a little bit about building in this area, kind of ad hoc, but there's the potential of 170 or so apartments going in this area. It's all in a proposal stage. But I remembered it now, because town of Pittsford, we're in constant communication with, but we're trying to build in more of a relationship with the town of Perrington to watch things like this, if they do come to fruition, and how we can plan ahead for apartment complexes and what was banquet halls. So, sorry to make you a little dizzy, but we'll go forward, and then we'll do the year-to-year comparison. For decades, we've been showing this to the Board of Education, the community. It's every first Wednesday of October. It's just a stake in the ground that we set to do the comparison, just so we have like years and we're not having a moving target. But we shrunk a little bit. When you do a year-to-year comparison by 14 students, although I checked with our registrar yesterday, we've made up those 14 students already. So lately, the enrollment's been pretty flat, if not growing a little bit. So that 14's a little bit of a misnomer. Our elementary schools shrunk by a little bit, but we have made some of that back since October. So really, nothing to report on there. But there is something to report on, and it's that nemesis of kindergarten. Great problem to have. We have more kindergartners coming to us than ever. The straight line there, the linear, showing our kindergarten growth over time certainly got much more popular as full-day K in 2018 kicked in. Middle schools relatively flat, but a little disparity between the two middle schools. Barker being a little bit larger and having the potential for more growth, and I'll talk about why in the next 10 minutes. And then the high schools, usually flat, although they're a little smaller than normal. Sometimes Mendon will reach as high as 1,000, Southern will reach in the 900s, but right now, they're a little light. That always bounces back. That's not caution or anything to worry about. And then we like to show that as a line graph. So middle schools, a little bit flat over time, although you see the blue line, we popped up in sixth grade here at Barker Road this past year. Definitely keeping an eye on that cohort. And then the high school classes, flat over time, grades nine through 12, 2015 till today. So the predictions that I like to brag about, if you look back in your notes from a year ago, we were almost 100% accurate. Donna keeps me honest, and she goes to the 100th place, so we can't round. So we show you the 99.71%. So we're pretty good, though, pretty close. And where was the error? It was in the kindergarten class. We had a little more than we expected. We undershot that. And since then, now that we have more than five years of trend data, we've altered the formulas, and from moving forward, we're going to add 3% to 5% in our prediction model for grade K. The schools were pretty solid, except for Park Road. I don't really know exactly why. Free will comes into play, but we did have some families move out, and we lost 34 kiddos at Park Road, which ruined my perfect average. So there's that. Five years, we're about 90% accurate. According to Donna, it's 97.76, and when we do try to plan ahead, that five-year prediction model seems to be the most accurate time and time again. We overshot it 10 years ago. The first presentation I personally did to the board, we had a little more students coming than what we ended up with, only 91% accurate, and throughout all grade levels, we had just overplanned. I don't know if COVID had anything to do with that. It slowed things down certainly for a few years, but we never reached the heights that we once predicted back then. This slide potentially could cause some angst, but I just want to explain it, because taken out of context, it can look ugly, is that Allen Creek could grow as large as 436 students to start. But, you know, common sense question is, do we have room at Allen Creek? I think it's worthy of a study. I don't want to be just running roughshod over a big question like that. I will tell you that the sections we have there now, with the seats available, we have enough spaces across the grade levels for 67 kids, and I think there's a delta there of about 40. But I think bigger questions eventually will need to be raised around support services and encore areas. Do we have enough space for those classes? Just something to be mindful of moving forward. And the same thing with Jefferson Road. The programs we have there and the sections and the spaces, as we creep up towards 563, if that really happens, something for all of you to keep in mind, that school has never been that large. It usually hovered around 400 to 500 all the years that I've been around. So 563 would be a new high watermark. Mendon Center, that is a low watermark, about 670 kids. And I say that because where the new construction is, and I'm going to show you exactly where, that's where the new students K through 5 will end up for the most part. So that is a low watermark. I think eventually in the next 10 years, that school will creep back up to about 700 kids. Park Road, something to keep an eye on?
Jeff, do you plan on talking anymore about Mendon Center in regards to the ratio of the split?
Yes.
Would that be coming up?
Yes. Yep, and I show much more detail. Thank you for reminding me. Park Road is losing a few students, so it's something to keep in mind, especially with that Burgundy Basin Inn slide that I had to go back to. I'm not saying those kids will go to this school, but it's just an option. It's an idea for a committee to process or us to think about. So that's the room that has the space right now. And then Thornel Road flattening out over time. This is a line graph of that data. The high schools having a little bit of ebb and flow, bubbles, again, as I call it, going through. I've circled Barker Road and Mendon High, and I'll get to Mike's question in a moment, because those two schools do need to be talked about. Thank goodness we're doing some construction, because those schools have the greatest potential to get larger in the future based on home growth alone. Some line graph showing that. Projections out to 2034. This one's a little more challenging to do, because now we're trying to predict kids that have not been born yet. So we do the best we can with that trend data. We do the best we can do looking back at different schools and different neighborhoods and how that affects the turnover rate. So we do the best we can, but we've been pretty accurate with this chart. Sometimes there's a misnomer in the community that we're losing our students to private schools, and this data would show you differently. Matter of fact, over time, the private school setting placements, because we keep track of that through our registrar's office, has actually shrunk, and it shrinks each year. The total pool of students that we would have to pull on is about 6,153. That's census. And then those about 55 to 5600 kids come to our schools, that's the maroon, and then about 597 go to private settings. So if you're ever hearing that we're losing kids to private settings, it has not been true, at least for the last 10 years. And then a common question as well, for those kids that are going to private settings, where are they going? And I like to show the schools inside the catchment areas locally, even though St. Louis is shrinking a little bit. And I like to show the private schools, for the most part, where students are going. I think there's a little footnote, they're saying there's a lot of onesies and twosies where other students go, and you can find that in your board packet. But here's out of district, out of catchment area where kiddos are going. And I like to highlight the homeschool, because that's decreased since COVID, but not quite back to the 2018 numbers. It's just something that Shayna's office, I believe, keeps an eye on, and we all keep an eye on. So you see where we're at with the blue arrow, around 5600. I would say reaching out to 2034, 5700, we would grow a little bit. And I have to repeat it twice, that I think that's the low watermark. And I would personally predict getting closer to 5700 or 5800 because of the home growth that I'm going to show you. So it will be that and/or more, would be my professional opinion. To that end, around kindergarten, we are starting to put larger numbers in, the long-term placeholders. I circle this, because again, these students have not been born yet. Some of those families haven't even been formed. So we put placeholders in there. It's not a typo, just to kind of show what we think the cohort is. And I think years past, we've put closer to 300 or 350 kids, and now moving forward, it's 362. And that cascades and affects all the rows and grades below it. So there is a domino effect. Here you see birth rates across the county, which is important. Obviously, you see a downward trend, and then it really bottomed out during COVID. But coming out of COVID, and this is always two years old or more, when we get it from the county, we can report it to you. But we are starting to do a little bit of an increase in regards to birth rates. Overall, I would say family sizes are smaller. So whereas you're like, well, we're still having babies, yes, but fewer families having larger families, probably on an average, two kids per family, if that. And you can see here the percentage that comes to our kindergarten cohort, about the same over time. We get this data from BOSI's, from the Monroe Regional Information Center. Not much disparity among other districts like ours that are in the county and surrounding areas. Not much fluctuation or big troughs or crests. It's pretty solid, pretty straightforward with all the surrounding communities. A little bit of growth here and there, but not much. The face of the organization is definitely changing. You see the different races and ethnic groups here over time from 2015 today on how we're changing. And here shows numbers. You might ask, which of those are changing the most? It would be your Asian Pacific Islanders are growing in our district, and those identifying as multiracial. And if you want to go in the way back, not quite when the superintendent and I taught here in the 90s, but that would even look more different, or different. But this is showing you 91% white back in 2004, and now 69%. Our students are becoming more diverse for sure. The data would show that. How do we stack up to the rest of the districts around us to dispel any rumor or myth? We're middle of the pack. When you compare East Aran to Coit, all the way up to Honey Eye Falls, Lima, we're almost dead center, right in the middle, as far as our diversity with ethnicity and race. So I'm going to get into the superintendent's question about Thornel Road, and more of Mendon Center, and more of Barker Road, and more of Mendon High as well. So I'll slow down on these slides, because I think this is the part of the whole presentation that requires the most conversation later. This is a map I received, and we have received for years from the town. Every November, they expect a call from us, and they're very collaborative, and they start sharing with us the maps, which in the salmon color predominantly shows where the growth areas are, and that's south of us right now. I'll show a blow-up of that in a minute. And today, I want to talk a little bit about our Pittsburgh Oaks property that was the old Barn Bazaar. I'm not sure if that's meaningful for all of you, but some of us that have been around, the Barn Bazaar over on Clover, that is slowly becoming apartment complex. So we'll talk about that. And then the Burgundy Basin Inn proposal, it's not shown here, because it's in Perrington. So there's nothing to show here. And here's the pop-out of the blow-up I promised. I circled the traditional neighborhoods that we've been looking at, although many of them are being built out. And then you have surrounding neighborhoods in that salmon color that are going to start breaking ground in the next five to 10 years that will affect, back to the superintendent's question, Mendon Center, Barker Road, and Mendon High, and I'll show you exactly where, using this slide. The rows go from new developments that are fairly built out with a little bit of space, and as you go through the rows, it shows more growth potential with vacant building lots and the potential for families, all the way down to ground that hasn't been broken yet. All the ones there in salmon color also feed Mendon Center. So new homes feed Mendon Center. Mendon Center, then, and it's the ratio, the, I hope I got it right, it's almost like 80/20. I think 80% of Mendon Center kiddos go to Barker Road. So that's why Barker Road and Mendon High get a lot larger. Should that be examined? That would warrant a whole study, I think. I'm not going to be just, again, running roughshod over a quick decision. I think that would have effects and emotions, and definitely a community decision, for sure.
I would say that's changed significantly over the last several decades.
Yes.
In the 90s, it was almost reversed.
Yes.
So there was more than 70%, 65, 70% that went to the Southern catchment area.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's a variable. We can't, we can't predict where, who's moving out of the catchment area and moving in. But we can look at new builds and where they go.
100%. Those are shown at the bottom of this table. So I totally agree with the superintendent. For this group to look at in the next five to 10 years, if those new neighborhoods come in, you know, should we be shifting where kiddos end up for middle school and high school? That's a decision absolutely should be discussed. And then towards the end of the table, we just have the one that's mending green, it's in Mendon, that would feed Thornel Road. That's why Thornel Road's not really affected by new growth. And then in a golden color, the Pittsburgh Oak Apartments, the Barn Bazaar where it used to be. Right now, there are 57 permits for apartments going in. We were reminded, as Donna calls around to these folks who are developing, that the apartments are one-bedroom apartments. These are not massive family establishments. These are very small. I don't know the exact audience they're targeting, but they're very small. They are not going to attract families of three kids, five kids, eight kids. It's just, it's not what it's designed for. And it does have the potential of having over 150 apartments in that complex. So something to think about, too, when we're looking at boundary lines and watching Jefferson Road grow. I circled the bottom number there, too, because 200- I circled the bottom number there, too, because two hundred and seventy-five families could be coming into that Mendon Center, Barker Road, Mendon High track over the next five to ten years. We usually have about thirty to fifty new builds a year. You do that quick math, so it is something to keep an eye on. And whether you're going to change that ratio or not with Mendon Center, it's something to think about in the next three to five years. And to continue with some of that questioning of, you know, where do the kids end up and how do they get there? This chart in your packet and on the screen shows that the kids that have moved in those neighborhoods, in those various rows that I just showed you, they don't all come in as kindergartners. They could come in as elementary through Mendon Center, they can come in through Barker Road as sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and of course, through high school. And here is a tally of how they've ended up since those developments started. So yes, we've almost had a hundred new kids for the, for the elementary school, about forty for Barker, and about fifty for Mendon. And I see that number growing as those two hundred and seventy-five other families move in as well. That trend will continue. We like to point back to our twenty twenty. We called it attendance boundary review, but we right-sized or looked at the resources at Mendon Center, Jefferson Road, and Allen Creek. Because this is a reminder for some of the, that are new, that Mendon Center was around eight hundred students back then, and Jefferson Road was three fifty-five, and Allen Creek was three seventeen. And with some moving around attendance boundary lines, we are now normalizing. And Mendon Center's at six fifty, plus the new builds that are going to come, so it's going to grow. That's what the sidebar says. And then Jefferson Road, I wouldn't say it's stable, it's growing a little bit, but solid, and Allen Creek's solid. So for now, the redistricting or the reallocation of boundary lines is working, but it's definitely something to keep an eye on moving forward. So in summary, continue, as all of you will do, is to watch grades K through five and the cohorts that come through, and the large kindergarten classes some years and the small kindergarten classes some years. And you get the idea that it's not perfect and it's not completely flat, but there are bubbles that go through with these cohorts. And the same thing you can find with grades six, seven, and eight. A little more solid, a little flat, but same thing with grades nine through twelve, you get some, some differences there, some disparity. So in summary, the county birth rates, according to data that's a little old, is certainly increasing, rebounding, keep an eye on that. The student population is definitely becoming more diverse through move-ins and families coming to Pittsburgh. And Mendon Center catchment area, I know I've said that a number of times, but it's something to look at with new building and construction for homes, but also construction for our schools and looking at resources, specifically at Barker Road as we're doing, and as Mendon High. So that's my update on projections.
Are there questions? We appreciate that, I'm glad that you're in our team now.
All right. Yep, you're welcome, thank you.
Good evening. The CSE and CPSE recommendations are on the consent agenda.
Thank you. There is not a need for an executive session this evening. The first for your consideration are the twenty-five, twenty-six budget guidelines. To bring to your attention some changes from years past, you'll see, actually, if we just talk really quickly about the consistency, our district planning team firmly believes that the categories in the past should remain, which is developing a student-based budget first, providing high-quality professional development, balancing our investment in education with a sensitivity to limited community resources, and maintaining fiscal stability now and into the future. Some of the changes that, to draw your attention to, are as follows. We talked a little bit more in these budget guidelines around engaging in thoughtful short and long-range financial planning, especially with the unknown and the variability relative to foundation aid. We also wanted to highlight the future potential for electric buses and how important it is to sustain our transportation reserve. And then two separate bullets around engaging legislators relative to foundation aid and different types of advocacy work to make sure that we're doing our part and putting the appropriate requests and/or pressure to ensure we get the funds needed. And at our last district planning team meeting, we added a bullet that says, that reflects our need to review and adjust staffing to align with revenue sources. What we're projecting, well, not more than projecting, what we're facing right now is our need to, to actualize approximately one point five million dollars in reductions for next school year as we develop this budget, which reflects a lot of the, the steps we've taken already to reduce that from four point five million dollars approximately when we started this process. So we are using more reserves. We've worked through a retirement incentive. We've consolidated administrators at the central office team level, and that's brought us down to about a one point five million dollar reduction. And that's without understanding yet where our revenue will be relative to foundation aid. So we wanted to make sure that as we project our budget guidelines, that it's very transparent as far as what we're, what we're doing, what we're planning for, where we are, and how we're trying to advocate for increased funding within the budget. So budget guidelines for your considerations.
May I have a motion for approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget guidelines? Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor. None opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, a couple other updates for, first, thank you of students for, there's so many of you here tonight, this is great. If you're a Bill's fan, you can leave right now, you can leave early. Anyone there? No? Kind of? No? Who are, who do you like? Seriously? Oh, my gosh, you're, I'm going to talk slow. We're going to keep you here until midnight now. Here we go. So a special thank you to Mike Vesby, I think. So as I listen to him talk right now, I'm a little bit worried that he's getting sick. We spent seven-plus hours in the car together yesterday, driving to Albany. We wanted to continue on our pledge to advocate strongly with our legislators. So we carved out a day to meet with Senator Mayer, Assemblyperson Benedetto, and who are both the education chairs in the Senate and the Assembly. And then we met with our local legislators, Senator Brown and Assemblyperson Lunsford. And we had actually great visits with, with all four legislators. We shared our concerns as follows. So we kind of went through relatively a script of sharing our concerns, and then the conversations went based on questions that they asked. But we talked about the impact of inflation, subsequent increases in the cost of food, energy, healthcare. We talked about the tax cap. And we did this coupled with the increased cost of minimum wage, along with the cessation of federal funds. All of that juxtaposed to us receiving approximately a dollar seventy-five increase in foundation aid per student for this year. And, and how that, it just doesn't add up. So when you, when you look at all of those criteria, we have more money going out than we have coming in. We shared that we continue to use our savings account. We're utilizing over a million extra dollars this year for next year's budget to reduce our deficit. And as we met with the legislators, we talked to them about this not being a sustainable practice. We shared that even with the additional use of reserves and with high-interest earnings that we've received, we're facing a one point five million dollar budget gap. We talked about our pride in having an extraordinary school district and our concern about layoffs and programs, et cetera, if funding does not come in. Additional topics that were discussed, we talked about the increased costs of special education and mental health. We talked about the statewide bus driver shortage. We talked about the tier-six impact on recruitment of new staff. And then we talked about how districts now are in competitive wage wars with one another because of a shortage of teachers and support staff, and how complex it is now for the hiring and retention of all different types of support staff. We concluded with a specific ask from the legislators to support us in guaranteeing a minimum of a three percent increase to foundation aid. If we received that minimum, that would take our one point five million dollars of current budget gap and cut that in half. And we feel that the rest would be manageable enough where we're not looking at program cuts or, or layoffs, et cetera. All of them were extraordinary. They pledged their support. They really believed that our next steps should be working with our two regions, which is unique to New York State, for us to have two state ed regions members within our catchment area. And so we will reach out and meet with our regions. And they also recommended highly that we begin petitioning the governor's office. They, I think they all concluded with the same thing where it's not just Pittsburgh that they're hearing from, and that the more we can do as a county in gearing our advocacy efforts as a county to the governor's office, because according to them, they are already championing increase in public education funds on our behalf. So with that, I'll take any questions? Anyone? Okay. I also want to share some information around transportation, which has been a struggle for us, which we, we did speak with the legislators about, which, again, is a statewide concern. But I want to share, just to put things in perspective, some numbers. So we have three hundred and twenty-one in district bus routes. We have thirty-nine bus routes that are out of district that go to approximately eighty different locations, which is significant. We, because of the amount of bus runs we have and the lack of our own drivers, we've also had to contract transportation out. And that's had a significant impact, going from two hundred thousand dollars in our previous budget to eight hundred thousand dollars currently. We have thirteen contract bus runs. We also have to contend with per the law, that we have to pick up students that are classified as McKinney-Vento. McKinney-Vento are essentially students that are deemed homeless. And this can range in, in significant distance of where we have to pick up and drop off. We currently have thirteen runs that range from picking up students and dropping them off in Russian Rieta, the city of Rochester, Penfield, and locally as well. So we have a lot of, of bus runs, private, McKinney-Vento, our PCSD students. But we also have a, a shortage, like, like most districts do, relative to the quantity of, of bus drivers that we have. We were doing well this year with no bus cancellations at all, until a couple weeks ago, when we lost about seven bus drivers in a real short amount of time for primarily significant medical reasons, and many of them are, are long-term. So we, the good news is we picked up two bus drivers, and we're just waiting for their, their clearance from fingerprints. But we are constantly looking for bus drivers. When I look at all of this, I guess my main point in sharing this is that we've had to cancel some bus runs. And canceling bus runs doesn't mean that a student is waiting at their house and never picked up, or waiting at school at the end of the day and never being able to be brought home, but it's a huge inconvenience. What that means is that instead of students being driven home at two twenty-one at the middle school, for example, if their afternoon bus run was cut because there's no one to drive them, they would have to wait until just after three o'clock for, for one of the runs to come back around and then, and then drive them home. We have everyone possible, and I have to, first of all, I have to thank our drivers, thank everyone in the transportation department. We have our mechanics driving, our department, our director driving, we have dispatch driving. Anyone that can drive a bus right now is driving a bus, while we continue to market and, and work with the unit on ways to attract more, more bus drivers. We're also looking at ways to improve communication to, to families and to students and with principals, should there be bus cancellations. And, and I guess I would finally share that i- if you do the same thing, you can expect the same results. So we're, we're looking at doing things differently in the, in the now and near future and, and longer term, relative to making sure we're not canceling bus runs. So part of our focus is certainly on attracting more drivers, but we are going to have to get into some type of efficiency study relative to the time on buses, the distance from schools, the double runs versus the triple runs, et cetera. So we will be engaging in that. In, in short order, we are meeting with the transportation department, human resources, the business office, to have our own summit relative to how can we, one, mitigate what we're going through right now from a customer service perspective, and then how do we make sure we're not in the same boat next year? And, and part of the answer is going to be AI and the, the new software and maximizing that and making sure we're using it to its fullest. Part of it's going to be looking at our wages and, and how we are structuring, how we pay bus drivers. Right now, we're in line with, with the county, but we have a different demographic. We have a lot of older drivers comparatively that are slowly either retiring or we're finding them out on medical more. So we're, we're working towards making this a, a much better, more stable type of department. For those that are currently driving, we, we thank you, we appreciate you, and, and we want to work with our transportation department to make sure we can grow accordingly. Any questions on transportation? Okay. Quickly, our capital project work. I, I will not go into a specific scope and sequence of, of our work, but I will put a placeholder next to some of the, I don't know if irritation is the right word, that's about to start when we start a capital project. But this spring, we will begin the staging areas with our construction equipment over at Mendon High School, which is going to absorb many of the student parking places. So we have to figure that out. We also will begin the staging process at Barker Road this spring, which will also utilize much of our parking spaces out back. Subsequently, we have, because of the amount of construction that will be happening here for the next two to three years, we've moved our budget vote, starting this year, to Cawkins Road Middle School. So we will continue to reiterate that for decades, we've had our budget vote here, and we're making this change. And our budget vote will be at Cawkins Road. While we are doing this, this planning, we are working with internal folks first relative to parking and staging of, of equipment, and then we'll begin our outward communication. Then the last thing I have, our Barker Road principal. Sarah Jacobs has left to go become the high school principal at HFL, so I want to wish her the best of luck and thank her for all she's done for Barker Road. We just closed our posting process, and we could not be happier with the highest could not be happier with the highest of quality of applicants that we've received, to the point where we have to dwindle the list down for who we're going to interview. So we have a lot of experienced administrators, both locally and nationally, that have applied. And we'll begin that process in the next couple weeks, with the hope of being able to recommend a principal prior to February break. And that is all.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I do have one more thing on the agenda. We do have a, a gift to the district on the consent agenda, and that's a donation of lunch for 800 students and faculty, valued at approximately $2,000 from Danny Daniele. And that will be at Sutherland, I believe. Correct? Yes.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. All in favor? That carries. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here.